Select Board's meeting, November 27th, 2018. In attendance, Chairman Deedy, Mr. Fox, Mr. Mogul, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
All right. So, first up is the floor public comment.
Mr. Chairman, we learned this afternoon of the passing of Pat Frazier. Mrs. Frazier is a former dog officer for the town of Southwick. So, if we could have a moment of silence for Mrs. Frazier. Thank you.
All right. First up is public comments. So, anyone like to speak to us? Well, we're probably not going to answer. We normally don't, but we'll gladly listen. Just at least state your name and address for the record. All right. Now, here we go. So, our first appointment is at 6:40. We got a few minutes. All right. Pass that. Yes?
Would it be okay if I made a comment about a case here tonight?
If you'd like to make it, that would be the time to say anything you'd like to say.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Erica Emelman. My children are six or seventh generation students in the town of Southwick. My lineage is Johnson. Before that was Larson, and before that was Nielsen. And we also have a bunch of other lineages here. This is Megan Arnold. Her husband is Devin Arnold, and that would be John Arnold, who used to be the selectman of Southwick. So, anyways, what I would like to say is that I don't really have a place to speak. However, in regards to a case that we're going to hear tonight, in terms of a dog or dogs.
Yep.
I have a German Shepherd, and he is a canine, and she is a canine. And when my husband passed three years ago, as unfortunate as it was, his death is a homicide. And however, the dog became the alpha of the household. And so, as un-understanding as dogs are, especially puppies in this case, which we might hear tonight, or that you have already heard, I had to call upon my handler of the dog in order to become the handler or the alpha of the household again. So, dogs are fickle as they are, and I don't know that we can judge upon them on their first offenses, as gregarious as they might be. When my husband died, and our dog, our canine, became the alpha of the household, she bit every single person that came up to our front door, regardless of whether or not it was a male, or female, or an adolescent. It didn't matter. And so, beyond that, once there was a question upon that dog, I was able to institute a plan of action. And so, I called the handler, a canine handler, and that canine handler then once told me how to become the alpha, and told me how to retrain that dog in order to be not a menace to society. And since then, we've had no issues. And she is super-socialized, and if anyone, you know, walks by or comes into our driveway after that handling, there's no issues. So, as long as I can say that, I think that would be okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I'll just say one thing. I don't know. I think they all turn, I live on Klein Road in Southwick. My wife has a horseback riding and boarding stable, and Dave's daughter takes lessons there. He's brought his dogs over there on numerous occasions. And I've got dogs there, his kids there and all that. I've never had a problem with his dogs. They've been fine. They bark a little bit, but what dogs don't. Other than that, they've got along with the other dogs fine and everything else. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
All right?
Anyone else?
Oh, and on top of it.
You only get five minutes. Sorry.
My orphaned children. I bring them over to the Messiah's house all the time, and they lay on the ground. And I'm not a dog person at all. They lay on the ground with their dogs, and they lick them, and they love them, and my children love their dogs also.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Autumn White, and I babysat the Messiah's, and I have never once seen either of the dogs show aggression towards any of the kids or anything else, or dogs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi.
You know, what I really want to point out right now is...
Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry. One side, and closer than the other. What happened was tragic for both families, and we feel terrible. What I want to bring attention to right now is that this has now split off into two different issues that I asked, looked into. My family is no longer safe. My husband, as a police officer, is no longer safe, at the hands of these people who have had fake accounts made, and terrible malicious things, and threats to my family and my children. And while we're ready to take on the consequences of what happened, because, you know, what happened, happened, and fine, we do not have proof of how the dog died. The dog died five days later. We didn't look at the vet bills. We paid them right away. Now, put that aside, I am requesting that something be done with the fact that numerous forums, Mass Live, had to shut down comments because of the disgusting and disrespectful things they would say about a police officer in our community, who works so hard to protect everyone in this community. I am so disappointed. I've grown, I've been raised here, I live here, and my kids are in the school system, and people are talking and they're saying things. And while people have freedom of speech, I'm extremely disappointed. I am extremely disappointed with how this has been handled, and that we have had no support whatsoever. So, all I ask is that going forward, with whatever decisions we make today, is that there is something out there that people need to stand down and stop harassing my family. I have people driving by my house. I can't go out in public. I don't trust my kids being outside because I can be threatened with a gun. And that is something that needs to be addressed, and I think it's fair enough that as human beings, my husband's not here today because he's dealing with my three devastated children, because we had to get rid of two of our dogs. Two of our dogs! You don't have kids! Two of our dogs, okay? Let me see. All right? So, he's fine. You have to understand that, like, as sad as this is, that we've lost two puppies to this. Two puppies that my husband worked really hard to train. And on the record as well, is that I was home, not him. He's been bashed as a police officer. That is not fair, and I will not stand for it. And something needs to be done by this town. And that's all I ask.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Nobody else? All right. We'll move on with the meeting. Okay. We're still only at 6:40. We have minutes for November 13th, Tuesday. Need a motion to approve?
Some more.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I had to see that here. I'm sure right here.
You just read them off.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Send these down.
Oh, executive session for November 13th. Don't go for warrants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yep. All right. Payable warrant, 1-9-1-3B, dated 11/19/18, in the amount of $1,190,085.55. We also have another payroll warrant, 1-9-1-3, dated 11/26/18, in the amount of $252,445.73. We did the minutes, we did the executive. Renewal of liquor license pending receipt of all requirements set forth by the ABCC and the licensing authority. So, I need a motion to approve.
Some more. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, any issues that we need to know about with all this?
Not yet.
Nothing?
This has to be done by the end of November.
Right.
And then, they'll start bringing me all their other information.
Right. And the border health stuff went out for the liquor ones with it?
No, that one was earlier.
Right. Went out earlier.
Yep.
Okay.
And their stuff's starting to come back to me, so we're working it out.
Good. Any questions about that, guys?
No.
Nope. So, this next one, I'm not going to name the names. I had gotten a phone call during the week for A2. Anyway, Mr. Richard, I'm going to screw this up. Mitch Ovitz of Agawam would like to donate a bench at the animal shelter. Through the conversation, I think he thought we were going to buy the bench. He met with the, apparently he was friends with the mayor of Agawam, and explained to him that we can go to some of our funds and get money and buy benches. I explained to him we're not buying a bench, that he can reach out to some town businesses and raise some money for a bench. So, he's looking for us to approve, should he come up with the funds, to put a bench, apparently outside of the animal shelter, in regards to some folks in town that had a lot to do with the animal shelter. So, I told him we would definitely look at it as a board, and, you know, allow approval of the bench if the board seemed fit, but we were in no shape or form going to raise money for the bench. Correct? Does that make sense?
So, when he wants to donate it...
Wanted to go to a town meeting. I said, "They're trying to buy a pond. I don't think they're going to spend any money on a bench right now."
We'd be happy to accept a donation of a bench, if it's a proper bench.
Yeah, the same ones there in front of Agawam.
And actually, I hate to say it, Mr. Chairman, we have to be watch out for ADA compliance, because if you put a bench there, the sidewalk has to...
Go to the bench.
Right.
Yeah.
We ran into that with the council.
We ran into that before, so look out for donations sometime.
So, we discussed it, and, yeah. Hopefully, he can figure out how he can afford that bench. All right. It is 6:40, and I believe that's the time for Zantos.
Correct.
All right.
This is a, basically, a housekeeping hearing.
Yeah, are they here? Do they need to be here?
No, they don't. They'll be here in two weeks, because they're, they never changed their corporation years ago.
Yes.
So, now, they're going to sell it to another corporation. It's going to the same hands, but this has to be the corporation to start with at the next hearing.
Okay.
Okay? So, this is housekeeping, and then the next hearing is going to stay in the same hands. Nothing's going to change, except for corporations going from the parents to the...
Right.
Okay. Will the DBA change?
It's actually a corporation change.
DBA is the same.
Yeah.
So, it's the holding corporation.
Right. All right.
Here, no, this is where the law counts.
Yeah, no, I'm reading what I had in front of me. It's for something else. Okay. All right. So, notice is here by given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Parthenon Pizza Restaurant, Inc., DBA Zantos, oh, nice, Spiros. You want to say it?
Can't help you. San Giuliottis.
San Giuliottis manager has requested a public hearing to change the corporate name from Parthenon Pizza Restaurant, Inc., DBA Zantos, to Z2S Enterprises Incorporated, DBA Zanto. Plot plan is on file in the Select Board's office. Existing premises consist of a 1,300 square foot block building, two exits in the front and back, and one, I'm sorry, two exits in front and back, and one entrance, with seating for 48 people. All right. So, I need a motion to open the hearing.
Some more. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I read the legal ad. Is there anything else to be entered in? Nope. It's strictly a paperwork issue. All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the name change? Anyone here to speak against the name change? Wonderful. You guys have anything you'd like to discuss?
No.
Sure?
No, sir.
All right. I need a motion to close the hearing.
Some more. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to grant.
Some more. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And they're coming in front of us in two weeks to do what?
This corporation is transferring the license to another corporation.
Okay.
And we enter...
So, it'll be like a transfer.
Right.
We'll lead 2S to another one.
Oh, there'll be another one after that?
Yeah. And that's got to butter no one up here.
Right. Okay. Up next is the Southwick Senior Candy Cane Extreme Ganza. That's what they're calling it? All right. So, December 19th at 11 o'clock, Tucker's will be catering the senior luncheon. Your choice is going to be Yankee Pot Roast or Big Scrut. Please let the, them know downstairs. And the high school choir will also be there that day. Department heads are asked to help the seniors with serving. It's the buffet like usual. Can you make it?
Going to try.
Okay.
I'll be. Carl's going to be there.
You're in. I'm probably out. If my ski thing opens up, then we're out. So, you two will do a great job.
Got my apron on also.
All right. So, by the 19th, I'm sure they're going to be open. All right. The dog hearing decision. So, we've closed that hearing last weekend, the dogs. It's come to our attention that the dogs have left town. So, I had three different versions of what we've done in the past with dog hearings, and every one of them are completely different. So, what are you, did you reach out as far as?
I did.
And?
I talked to the town attorney, and it was raised during the hearing by an employee of the town, and in our role as acting as police commissioners, I wanted to make sure that we were in good standing to hear this issue. And on advice of council, and this is strictly, has nothing to do, based on the issues that were raised during the hearing, this has nothing to, the dog issue has nothing to do with Mr. and Mrs. Messiah, or Mr. Messiah's employment as a police officer in the town, so we can proceed with our hearing portion of what we're doing.
Okay. All right. So, we've closed the hearing.
Hearing's closed.
Any discussion?
I...
At this point, the dogs have left.
The dogs have left. You know, it's unfortunate. You have neighbors that, of course, now there's some friction, and that's unfortunate. There was an incident, and really, we got a recommendation from our dog officer. So, I think that, and as Doug pointed out before, you know, we have three options, and I think there's only one legitimate option, that if for some reason the dog should come back to the town of Southwick, they'd have to meet the requirements of the recommendation of the dog officer.
Okay. Sir?
I'm curious if this process is playing out a little differently than the first one that we had. So, I've been involved in three of them since I've been on the board. So, the first one, there was, post the hearing, there was another process going on, and there was an agreement drafted between the owner and the town.
Right.
And based on that agreement, that the dog left town. That was...
Different.
That was a little different, because we had already reached a conclusion and closed out the hearing.
Right.
I'm curious, in this instance, and I'm doing my best to follow your lead in failing miserably.
No, you're fine.
If we can, if there's a way, or, and I don't know what's the ramifications, if we can have a similar agreement, given that the dogs have already left, if we can, I don't know if the right word is continue, like they do sometimes in a court case, where they continue this without a finding for a period, and the stipulation that dogs aren't coming back to town, that's the legal agreement that would be in place. And then, as far as that, then, I don't know if the Select Board needs to come to a, you know, a conclusion as to this particular case, and with a ruling, or since that, the situation is the dogs are gone, if the Messiah's wouldn't have to have any remediation for those particular dogs, because they're gone. So, and that's, you know, if we, if we have a finding, one of the findings is, you know, there's a recommendation from the dog officer that we, you know, they would have to do this, they would have to do this, the dogs would have to do this, but since the dogs aren't under our jurisdiction anymore, does that matter? I don't know.
I don't think it really matters. I think it matters if the dogs came back, so you probably want to put something in, on writing, so they'd be notified that should somehow the dogs come back, whether it be the muzzle, or the pens would have to have the fence, and they have to have pens for them, or the fenced in yard, something.
And that could be in the, that could be in the agreement between the town and the Messiah's.
Right.
You know, the previous agreement stated the dog wasn't going to come back to town, and if they, if the dog, for some reason, did, there was ramifications thereof, and this could be a similar, a similar situation in that regard. And I don't know what's the ramifications for what, what the Messiah's are doing with the dogs, as far as if, and we render a decision upon those dogs, and what's the...
Wait, the dogs aren't here.
Dogs aren't here.
Right.
So, we can't tell the Messiah's they have to cage the dogs in the yard, they have to muzzle the dogs, they have to have them on a leash at all times, yada, yada. What's the point? They're not here.
Right.
So, I don't understand the, I don't, I don't see the benefit to anyone finding, to having an adverse finding here, when we could have a legal agreement in place, those dogs aren't coming back, and you could have a stipulation in that legal agreement as to, A, if they do, this is what happens. That, and that could be part of the decision process, as far as the disposition of this case, in my opinion.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Just that, it's like Doug said, the dogs are gone.
Right.
All right? Whether we do it that way, or we just, either way, any agreement is going to say if the dogs return, we're going to follow the recommendation of the dog officer.
Absolutely. No, absolutely.
So, I think we could take a vote to implement, you know, and have town council either draft something up, or just draft a law to that effect, and that'll be the end of it, because I don't think we want to beat this issue. It's, like I said, it's tragic. We've got neighbors that aren't getting along now. It's, one dog is dead, so I'd just like to put this thing to bed.
Absolutely. There's no good outcome here. I mean, everybody's agreed, I mean, you have a dog that's deceased, you have two dogs that are...
Right.
Now leaving town.
Right.
I understand it, and then, you know, the rest of the ramifications that need to be dealt with, I think there's other channels to deal with that. But I just think for this particular thing, I think if we can put the, the deal in place like we did with the previous one...
Joe, let's, Joe, let's example for that.
So, let me...
The board should authorize the chairman to structure with the town attorney and dispose of it. I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
You will? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I'll look at what's here, I'll look at what the dog officer recommended, and see if there's something we can come up with, that I'll show you guys, and see what your thoughts are. And quite honestly, and I'm not trying to be an ass, but we can do all that, but I don't think there's anything stating that the Messiah's have to sign it anyways, is there? I mean, the dogs are out of town.
Well, that's why... But we haven't rendered a decision yet, so if...
If we do...
If they don't sign it, we, we...
And I'm not, I'm just...
Right. So, my point is if we come up with, if...
So, if it's written...
That was a consent agreement. That was, that was...
Right.
It's a contract. It's a consent agreement between the Messiah's and the town of Southwick.
Right.
We, we have this hearing that's closed, that we have not rendered a decision on yet. We can keep this on the agenda going forward until such a time as that consent agreement is agreed to. If it's not, then we go through the other process. Even if the dogs have left town, then, then they, they're obligated to follow that under the law. This is, I think this alternative process is more amicable...
And I do too. I just...
And reasonable.
Realistically saying, you know, I mean, if they're my dogs and they left town, and, you know, I'd be like, what do you want me to sign anything for? They're gone. And I know they're not coming back. We don't know that, right? We can all assume they're not coming back, and that's why we're looking...
And that's what they've, that's what they've given to us in writing, but let's, but it needs to be committed to this legal form, to, because there is a dog hearing.
Yes, it's not...
Under Mass General Law, we have gone through this process. We have to finish it.
Understood.
That would be part of finishing it.
Okay. And I'll work on it this week. All right. Thank you. So, at the beginning of this event, I said, no one is going to speak.
Would it be okay to question what three decisions were?
No, it's, it's not any, it's not good to agree to anything, to okay anything, to even talk to you. We gave that out earlier. We're looking at everything that we have in front of us, and we'll figure something out, and we'll move on with it. Thank you. Sorry. All right. Roundtable discussion for the school district. Is it still on, or has it been canceled?
Still on.
Still on.
Weather's good. There's no reason it won't happen.
Okay. This Thursday at 5:30.
Yep, and it's actually posted for you to go and participate in both.
Okay. So, like, at 4:45, I'll take a text from somebody...
Yeah, sure.
Saying that we got to be there.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Things feel awful.
Very. All right. Safe route to schools program.
Good evening. Good night.
Good night, guys. Did you guys read this?
Yes, and I was going to...
I would love some more sidewalks.
I was going to bring it up when we meet with the school on Thursday.
Okay.
Because I, I think it is connected.
Yeah, I do think it's connected.
What, are we having a second seating tonight?
Yes. Yes. The buffet's not till 7:30, guys.
That's right. Cocktail hours in the hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea, because this, there's, looks like there's some opportunities here, especially talking about the city.
We've been going back and forth with the previous administration, and we've kind of mentioned it to the new administration, but now, I think, needs to be a little more forceful.
So, can Carl, this be emailed over to him before the meeting?
Sure.
Say, "Mr. Deedy would love for you folks to look at it, because it will be discussed."
And they're going to ask that it not be discussed at that time.
Too bad.
But...
Mr. Deedy has a tight schedule, and he would like to discuss it at that time.
But I think...
Keep it for your consideration and thoughtfulness in the matter. Or Joe can just come see you by himself, but you're better off with a group of people.
Sure.
Yeah, she'll know why.
Well, I mean, if, if you look at how this was presented, right?
Yeah.
Presented along hands with the, the SRO, which we fully supported.
Yeah.
And, and have funded, and this is something, you know, that corridor, we've made some improvements along Powder Mill, but that Powder Mill Depot intersection could be helped by this, the whole route along Powder Mill could be helped by this.
Yeah. And I know they looked at it years ago doing the sidewalk on Powder Mill, I know it was crazy because of the hills and.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, really, the, the region, I don't, I, I probably shouldn't say, but they just didn't want to buy into it for whatever reason.
Understood.
But now it's a, a case where we're talking about tax dollars.
Right.
And, and, and we talk about, and that's what the reason why we have the roundtable discussion.
Right.
Is what's impacting our community.
Right.
This is going to impact our community.
Sure.
And, uh, hopefully, uh, they will buy into the program. Because it also, right now, we have a, a situation on Powder Mill Road where they're, uh, have issues with the crossing guard and issues with the site plant, the site.
Yep.
Right?
I got a blinking light out there, but it's not enough.
So, it i- it does affect them.
Yeah.
And, and they should buy into this program and, uh, because it does affect, uh, not just the Southwick kids, but Grandville and Talon kids too.
Absolutely. Yep. All right. You can still send it to them for, I know they probably won't discuss it, but send it to them anyways.
Good time as any, everyone's gonna be there.
Everyone will be there. All right. So that was that. A seven is the Community Preservation Coalition. Statewide Trust Fund Distribution announced. Carl, A seven.
Yeah.
It's one hundred and fifty grand.
One hundred.
Southwick CPA State, one hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's just to let you know that the, uh, distribution from the state has come in.
Does it go with the letter that we got, this, did you all get your letters this week from, uh, the folks over there at the?
Well, no, that's, that's their fundraising for the additional hundred, uh, one million five to close the gap. This is the distribution from the state of Massachusetts on the monies that it's raised or appropriated through, uh, the supplemental appropriation.
Understood.
For communities such as ours, which is a three percent community.
Right.
So if you actually went on to the, um, webpage that this references, you see the three distributions that we get because we're a three percent community. So this, the dollars, which have, we've confirmed today that they've been received.
Yep.
Uh, then also goes along with the monies that are coming in on your real estate tax bills.
Yep.
And we've already received almost all of the first half of it.
Yep.
So, um, now the only thing that we would have to get is the second half of this semi-annual tax bill.
Sure.
But it's, it's right there along with the assumptions that were voted at town meeting.
Right.
So, because I, I know there's a series of proposals going before the CPC. So this is going to give them the dollar resources to act on those, including additional pending, um, agricultural preservation restriction, um, local shares.
Mm-hmm.
There may be some funds asked for, for some design and permitting on the, uh, the old canal.
Yep.
Uh, there may be some funds being asked for by the school, uh, district for, uh, commitment for the, um,
Plaiscape.
The Plaiscape.
Yep.
So those would be the dollars that would, you know, these dollars would be funding those initiatives.
Wonderful.
And don't forget the old cemetery.
And the old cemetery, exactly.
Yep.
So, there's your explanation, that's just to let you know that the monies are actually.
Thanks for getting us up to date. We really appreciate it. Wonderful. All right, seven o'clock, I have two different times on here, this is six fifty-five and this says seven.
So you're good.
We have another hearing, yep, notice of a public hearing by the select board. All right. Take that out, it's not even gonna work. The Select Board, Town of Southwick, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, at six fifty-five P M. In the Select Board's conference room in Town Hall. Pursuit to Chapter one four eight, Section thirteen, a license for explosive and inflammable materials. Certificate of Approval Record, Certificate of Registrations. Boy, fees, replacements, and alterations of the regulations for buildings. Explosion hazard appeals to Marshall, okay, appears to Marshall for eight oh one College Highway. This hearing will accomplish updating the Town of Southwick records to reflect the volume of gasoline diesel being stored in the underground tanks, are the tanks even in the ground? There's been a hole there for two years. All right, that's good to hear, tanks for underground tanks from twenty thousand to twenty-four thousand gallons. Interested parties are welcome to attend or submit written testimony. Joe Didi, Chairman, Russ Fox, Vice Chairman, and the old clerk Doug Moglen, the Select Board. Okay. Gentlemen, how are you? I bet this is your place. Right? How's it going over there? I don't think it's going well, you guys have been taking forever. Lot of headaches, huh?
In the last four weeks.
Last four weeks.
Finally, because the snow's coming, you decided to let's go? No.
The contractor got to let's go.
Oh, that hasn't been easy, has it?
And the contractor has to let's go.
Yeah. Contractors, you get some great ones and other ones you just, you shake your head. All right, now I want to read what I'm supposed to read, all right, a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I read the legal ad. All right, is there any other paperwork to be entered into the record? See, they're licensed. Oh, I have a whole packet, I have an eight by ten glossy photo.
Got one that's actual size, right?
I got, uh, letters that were signed by people, by, because they were sent to them, C O D, or whatever you guys call it.
The short history.
Yeah, hey, hey, how you doing over there, chief?
Hey.
Hey! So do I have to go through all this, we can just talk to you?
Tighter, Joe, that's a.
Oh, that, you know, that's got a bevel in it, so I didn't really recognize you. Okay, sir, please help us out.
Um, in their, uh, quest to get the new permit and the, and the application, um, we really started, Rich started digging through and found out that there was some, some history that we couldn't complete.
Sure.
Um, Michelle, Carl, looking through selectments meetings from the eighties, nineties to, uh, the history of it, that, um, long story short, the new application and the new tanks are four thousand gallons more.
Yep, I read that part, right, so they're four thousand gallons more.
So it's really a technicality.
Good, and it's good to get them in here because I want to say hi to them.
Yeah, and, uh, they have been, um, in our office multiple times. Rich, Rich has done a great job of working with all different town departments to try to get this resolved. And the only way we could clear it up is to get it a hearing, get it stamped, move forward.
Right.
So that, that's the.
Which actually helps them in their resale down the road, should they sell, because now everything actually jives, right? Right, they'd be scratching their head down the road, saying none of this matches, or the banks would, right?
Twelve thousand gallon tanks.
That's correct. For an aggregate of twenty-four thousand total.
So no diesel, just gas?
No, there will be.
There will be diesel.
Okay.
The, the way the tanks are set up are, is there's chambers.
Oh, they're compartmented, all right.
Great.
Eight and four, eight thousand and four thousand.
Okay.
So the history was that somewhere along the line, there was a preapproval of some sort, increase from twenty thousand to twenty-four thousand. But the only letter of record we could find indicated twenty thousand for the last license that was issued for the property.
Sure.
This again is just clearing that up, the rest of the paperwork will follow after that.
Understood, because I don't think we've ever talked about downage.
I, I think.
We've done a lot of gas stations over the years.
Probably when this happened, originally, it was the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Were involved and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It, it, it's.
Or just during a routine tank replacement, they just.
Yeah, part of it starts with us, and then, once they get what they need for this paperwork, it then goes to their engineer, which sends it to the fire marshal. The fire marshal approves it, it comes back to us, and D E P's somewhere.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there's quite the process.
Right, the state agencies were, were shifting around who was responsible.
So that site's remediated now? Because there was a release there, right?
There was during the tank removal, they tested the soil at the time of the tank removal, and then it was all cleaned up and remediated. We've got the floor.
Yeah, we have documentation for that, the initial findings were that there was minor contamination, um, and it had been rectified, and it's showing as a clean site right now.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
When you open it? Really, when you open it, not, don't just give me a fake one.
No, probably in the springtime, we'll wait, yeah, until the winter.
Yeah, right, in this long.
Yep.
Wonderful. It's great to hear.
We'll still keep working on the site for, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna need the.
Yeah, it doesn't end. Yep. Great.
The tanks are empty now?
Yeah, completely empty.
Yeah, you're not gonna go fill up, Douglas?
All I mean is.
No, what they, you gotta pay it.
No, it was never, they were never filled, we didn't even temporarily put water or anything in it, uh, to keep it.
Completely empty.
You gotta start, the minute you're filling, you gotta start selling it.
You know, my point is that, there used to be some underground U S Ts where there's a high water table, and suddenly they were above ground storage tanks.
Yeah.
Down on Biding Hill Road, right at the corner.
We did, and so one of the reasons for the, the current prompt response to backfill was because of that concern, that they, that there's no ballast in them. Typically, they would put fuel in them for ballast, but they didn't have the proper permitting or any of the other systems in place, so that wasn't allowed. Per D E P, everything meets their compliance and is capped, secured, and, uh, empty.
Yeah, great.
Plus, it's good for you guys to know that they're empty for right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't hurt. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Sir? Anything from the audience? Wonderful. So I, so I should ask, anyone here to speak in favor? Name and address? Nobody? Anyone here to speak against? Name and address, please? Nobody, we had our general discussion. Need a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I need a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, guys, I hope you open in the spring, we'd love to see you.
Appreciate it.
You know? It's never easy. All right. You can have that back too, ma'am? I don't know what it is, but you can have it. All right. So this must be the boat ramp, look at that, it's matching up. All right, up next? I do. I do.
See, when you pass the pit over here.
My car's got flat tires now, but I, we're going on.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, have a great night, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Be careful on the ride home. Did we make him live in town yet? Has he, we forced him to live in town yet?
Just signed a house in Agaw.
Oh, did he? That's great, because where was he based out of?
Southak.
Oh, good, that's, I love that, though. Yeah.
Fourteen minutes or something.
Nice, good to hear. He needs help moving, you get right out there and help him. All right. Anytime, keys are usually in it. It's not empty, but the keys are usually in it. Um, all right, so we're trying to update our boat attend, uh, uh, boat ramp attendance for this year. As, uh, some of you know, come January first, the rate of pay goes up to twelve dollars an hour. Um, as the state minimum, I guess, is that what you would call it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've already ordered kiosses for malicious, so I don't have to deal with it, hopefully.
Even though municipalities are exempt.
We know that.
You know, it's.
That caveat.
Not to get off, but, uh, so I went to D C this weekend, and every place I went, it was just slow, right? It's one, you know, packed like his place, just packed, and there's one attendant inside. So I'm the jerk in the room like usual, I'm like, what is the, you know, is minimum wage down to your twenty bucks now, or it's gonna be fifteen?
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five.
That's the federal minimum.
Federal minimum wage in D C, that's what they're paying them.
District of Columbia.
Seven twenty, twenty-five cents, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's wild, and here we are.
Congress never increased.
Yeah, yeah, but just, I've just.
Yeah, because they make the decision.
We can't get help at fifteen and, you know, or fourteen.
They're making a decision for us to go for fifteen.
Right, right, but they're at seven twenty-five. Yeah, I just, I'd expect to hear my daughter. Yeah, exactly. All right, so I need a motion to approve the new rates. All those in favor? Yep, understood, you may as well sign that one, since it deals with money. All right, school sewer project, change order number four.
It's closed out for the sewer projects with a major, so the board needs to sign off on it because at some point we'll, it'll be totally closed out and you're gonna, you're gonna have to, um, send the escrow back to them and equalize.
Okay. So we just need a motion to approve the new amount? Is that what it is? Or a motion for the same amount?
It's the same amount, it was, it was a, um.
All right, need a motion to approve.
Change order number four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And somewhere in this file, maybe it's in the other backup documents, there's a letter from the superintendent, Superintendent Willard.
To D E P.
To D E P to say, okay.
Complying with the.
The thing that.
Yeah.
Previous super signed us up for a million five, we're done.
Can you?
You let us off the hook now.
We'd like to burn that piece of paper saying that.
It meets the, uh, the requirements of the consent order with D E P.
No, absolutely, yeah.
Like, he said it nicer than I did.
Which was due in December of two thousand eighteen.
All right.
Made it by four days.
We have complied with the consent order, as the land.
Right.
Oh, have a good time, Joe, nice evening.
Yeah, hey, don't let the door hit you.
He'll be here soon, believe me, to see you guys.
All right, so I have number ten. Um, is, uh, William C.
Reiko.
Reiko, the mayor of.
This is to authorize the chair to negotiate a similar agreement with West Springfield for the boarding of animals at our control facility.
Okay.
As we did with Agaw.
All right, so this isn't, is this gonna be it, or can I tweak this? That's my question. Can you guys make a motion for Mr. Didi to play with this? Because I don't like the way it's written, I, I, I've done some research, of course, you know how that works.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's overall okay, but I just want to make sure. I, I, I reached in to find out what the other issues were and why all of a sudden Southwick was the suniest of light. The beacon of light on earth.
Right.
Because we're cheap.
No, 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 there's some other reasons, which I'm not going to discuss in public, and, um, and we're going to get them clarified on this, so it wouldn't happen in the beacon of Southwick.
We have the nicest kennel around.
What?
We have the nicest kennel around.
We do have the nicest kennel around, and, and, and we do.
Thank you.
So the chair is asking for a motion.
I will make that motion with the caveat. Agaw, small town, pays small amount.
I understand.
West Springfield, big town.
Big town, big balls.
Big, big, big amount.
Yeah, understood.
All right, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second his motion then.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
No, it's all good, I just, there's, there's just, there's some little tweaking we need to do so we don't end up in the same position that other towns have ended up with.
Statuting, I'm authorized in votes, yeah.
They're getting all this money from the casino, both of them.
Right.
You know, we didn't get anything.
We didn't get anything.
Throw us a bone.
And they drive right through the damn town. There's casino people. All right, number eleven.
Olive needs a bone.
Is a, uh, car license renewal account. All right, so one class one in town, Mr. Prifty. Our class two is, um.
Scott Zella?
Scott Zella, yeah, our, our K K Q B, which is the, um.
Sixteen River Road.
Yep, Southwick Motors LLC, which is, where's Southwick Motors LLC?
By it next to the inn.
Oh, yeah, of course, the new name, sorry about that. Kurt Saunders with the, uh, the Boats and Cars, Allen's Affordable Auto, Country Auto Sales, Sheridan Pro Tech, Chris Mill Motors, Best Auto, J D's Auto Care, and Interstate Coach Builders. And then for class three, which I usually think they call junkyard licenses.
That's it, that's what they have.
There's L K Q, which is in Southwick down off Sam West. Easy Solutions LLC, D B A Mass Used Auto Parts, which is, that's the new guy there on the left before L K Q.
Right, that was John Littgau's.
Yep, John, Mr. Littwax's old place. And then Westers Mass Rendering also holds a license.
Right.
Wonderful.
So that's coming, because these are all coming in for renewals, just like your liquor, so.
Yeah, and I've had several people approach me for class two licenses, but they all, there'd be so many feet now from another one, and it just.
Thousand feet.
Yeah, it just doesn't work, you know?
Yep.
Because we have a few available.
And within the right zone.
Theory.
Well, depending on what board, you know.
True, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to get rid of them.
Back in the eighties, we voted no more, and then the next previous.
You had twenty-five, you capped them.
Right, and then the next board moved them up. Then somebody moves them back down. I personally think we got more than sufficient in the Town of Southwick.
We got fifteen cent here, and I, and I agree.
You capped them at seventeen.
And, and if you look at the zoning, and then you look at the thousand foot between lots.
We kind of cleaned that up.
And some of the, correct, it's gonna be self-limiting, and some of the pre-existing non-conforming have left.
Yeah.
So the one, um, that's now the small engine place, so that use has changed, so that.
Right, Borgatti's.
Borgatti's, that. Borgatti's, that
But that cleaned up that mess.
Pre-existing non-conforming is lost, so now you've got a thousand feet from the one next to Murphy's in that direction.
Yeah.
Shendron.
And you, then you've got
Country Auto.
Waltz Auto up the other side, so a thousand feet, and there's not a lot of real estate
You can't put any more there, right.
And they gave up the one at the, yeah, the body shop used to have one too.
Yeah.
That's gone too.
Correct.
And so that use is now lost.
Right.
It's going in the right direction, you're right, right, we're adequately served.
Right.
Alright.
Do you want a motion to let me start the renewal process?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I guess we should do that.
Oh.
We need to sign it.
Alright, so next we need to do a, it's like a transfer reserve for eight hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, they, they were not aware that the
That, that doesn't work that way, we don't have that kind of money?
There is not that type of balance of funds, but
How could they not be aware of that?
They're just trying to
Maybe they're just trying to bring it to our attention in a, in a creative way?
Well, I think they would like to see the chairman speak to the legislative delegation.
Right, chief, it's not like it's a fire truck.
Right.
Yeah.
We already searched all the couch cushions, we pumped the ladder truck, we're done.
Right. But yes, I think we should, at this point in time, reach out to our elected
And we have.
And we have.
We should continue, because this is in the bond bill that was just passed by Senator Emerson. No, they have to take it off the shelf and
The governor
Right.
The legislature did their part and approved it.
Right.
The governor actually has to take it off and then authorize it, and then you get a standard state contract.
Alright, so, so we have to form a letter letting the governor know it's on shelf to lefty inside, if they could just reach up there and grab it?
Well, the previous governor
Yeah.
Also had
Had the
Monies.
Sitting.
That sat there and over eight years and never was expended, you know, so.
Really?
So.
So what are you telling me, Russ?
Um, what I'm saying, Mr. Didi is
But that beacon of light of Southwood?
That, that's
The sun's not gonna set on Agawam today.
I don't think all that money's gonna come out of that one.
Alright, so can you ask our elected officials to get us half? We'll, we'll work with them a little bit.
Well
Alright, I'll reach out to
The lake management has reached out
You, you take one, I take one.
Has reached out to both legislators on numerous occasions, they're well aware of it.
I can frustrate the one in this department.
Doing the best they can.
This was in the recent bill, and it was sponsored, the, the million bucks was sponsored by Senator Holmes.
Understood. So then we just can't get it off the shelf.
Well.
Alright, I still gonna talk to Maldega anyways.
Sure.
Just to get him wound up.
Might as well.
Since he couldn't help us with the fire truck. Um, A thirteen is a update.
Just to let you know the MRF, you know, the declining values for
Oh, yeah, isn't that crazy?
Recyclables.
Twenty fifteen, it was fifteen dollars a ton, and gentlemen, FY twenty, it's gonna be worth six dollars a ton.
So it's gonna end up costing us
In twenty-one, it's gonna be worth zero, at the rate things are going.
Yep.
Twenty-one or twenty-two.
Time to buy those bags and just, just shut everything down, sub it all out. Right, Russ?
I'll tell you, it's, it's, it's good to get to the point, why, why recycle, you know?
Well, yeah, you're there, yeah.
Right.
And, and, you know, when it starts
It's a hard sell.
Cost you money to recycle.
Yep.
And it's
It's an unfunded mandate.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, this is the actions of other governments, not our own government.
Right, but we're required to recycle.
I, I understand that, but now there's no output market for the recycled material that's driving the cost
Right.
Down.
Right.
Right.
So, there's some things that everyone
Because the recipient, recipient countries are much more picky on the contamination levels of the recyclables.
Correct, so the takeaway from, from this, one is that, but also is, when you are recycling, which we should, should still continue to do
Yes.
Is the stuff that shouldn't be in there, really can't be in there, that we were, got away with before.
Right.
Plastic bags, et cetera, et cetera, that mess up the recycling stream, and that's what makes those entire loads unrecyclable.
Well, yeah, with that interesting things in our composting pipe, engine blocks, couches.
Well, if you wait long enough.
Alright, so I'll give you the quick story, so Ski, Ski Butternut.
Yep.
That town has, did away with plastic bottles, plastic straws, so they go through thousands of cases of water up there in the winter time, and they can't sell it. And they're desperately looking at, how are we gonna sell bottled water, we can't sell it in the plastic container anymore.
We have poured it in a mug.
I don't know, but it just, you know, you don't think of that when you say, oh, oh, we're doing this, this is great, we can get rid of the plastic or the plastic bags, or it's wonderful, and then never even thought of, what do you mean you can't sell a water bottle? Yeah, it was all part of it.
So you can't, under your food permit, that you'll be working?
I don't work at Butternut, thank God, so I don't have that issue. I just charged him a buck to use the garden hose, I mean, that's what I would have done, but, but that's me, I'm a little different. Okay. Oh, so A thirteen is done.
They got it, Joe, don't worry.
Yeah, they got it, garden hose. Okay, A fourteen, Suffolk Fire Department, it's crossed out, it's recrossed out, I think it's saying, putting forward two names, which we did one the other day.
We held out some chaplain.
Now we're back to the chaplain.
Now you're revisiting the appointment of the chaplain.
Well, I thought you at least wiped out the X's, so we could read it better. So, Living Hope Church, and his name is Dan
Valeri.
Valeri. Alright, for the fire chaplain, I need a motion to
Second.
All those in favor?
Dan's a break eye.
Where's Living Hope?
Next to the Russian Church, Southland College Highway on the right.
Oh, wait on, I talked to him last week.
They just had, they had their picnic a couple of weeks ago, or
Great.
An evening, and they had, the fire department was there for Fire Department, Police Department.
Alright, chief, you got him.
He's a good guy, lives right in Westfield.
Nice. We did the MRF update. Alright, so I have your, Mr. Chaplain, okay, request for quotes, Depot Street survey.
Yep, that was in your chair mail right here, Joe.
Yep.
There you go. The board had asked for Randy to go and get quotes for the easements and survey information that's gonna be needed when Ben Coyle was here. So that's the estimate, so the board needs to vote to, and he did do quotes for it, that was the only one that came in, and this would be using the leftover sidewalk money for that purpose that you appropriated in May.
Okay.
So he's ready to go when you are, so if you could just initial that and
Motion, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And then when we get that safe routes to schools, we'll already have the survey done, shovel ready.
Which they require, right, they require to do a piece of this anyway.
There you go.
Well, the ironic thing is, when there was a huge chapter ninety project, like almost twenty years ago, the sidewalks had been designed by, you know, another engineering firm.
Sure.
What was the other one?
Um, West
Albert Huntley.
Oh, Huntley, I don't
I think
He was the survey.
Right, so that was part of the design, and it, because we had to do some costs for the, for the state to come in and do the paving, because they did, they did powder mill and South Long Yard.
Okay.
They get rid of the bridge at the same time?
No, the bridge was already gone.
Okay.
So, and this was part of that, and what happened was, there were certain easements that hadn't been acquired yet, and of course, if you can't sign a right-of-way certificate, then the state can't do its part of the project, or the project's gone, so the selectmen were stuck with it, one of those decisions where, oh, we're gonna miss the sidewalks, or, or we have to miss the whole project, and the position the selectman was. That amount of money was like five years' worth of chapter ninety money.
Sure.
They had to take, they had to take what they could get. So it was your typical public policy decision, where you don't get everything, you just get the most you can.
But the engineering for the sidewalks aren't what we're looking today, having them moved because of the bike lane, so they're useless to us, even if we had them on print tomorrow.
That's true, they probably wouldn't meet the latest code
Right.
If they did a new design.
Yeah. And, once we figure out what we're doing with those new developments, we'll have some of that sidewalk money coming in, hopefully?
The banking, yeah.
The banking.
Set up for it if
For three of them, right?
And then we can go back out for bids for sidewalks, so we went out once, didn't like what we got for pricing, correct?
Yeah, that was just an estimate under an existing vendor unit price. And, and we were never really
Gonna go out for
We were never really clear on why it was that level of dollars, because it must have had other issues in there, like tree removal
Mm-hmm.
And things like that, but, no, Randy's prepared to go out to bid for a unit price contract.
Okay, because I've been approached by a few other people, saying, if you do go out, let me know.
Sure.
And I said, I told them, I said, oh, yeah, no, we'd love to talk to you about sidewalks. Okay, wonderful, sorry about that. Okay, so we did that, land use license.
When they do their annual goods and services, we should just make them put that as one of the bids.
You know, we actually should, shouldn't we, because then we'll get three quotes, and we can have them all year.
Right.
And whoever can get to the sidewalk.
Right, we should just automatically
You know what, let's do that.
Have that included, just like you do with tree removal
Yep.
And everything else, so.
That sounds great. That's why I keep you around, Carl. Alright.
I thought there was other reasons.
No, 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 sidewalks, sidewalks and paperclips. Land use license.
I walk them both.
For fifty-eight Berkshire Ave. Okay, what is this about?
Uh, you had met with, you, you met with the, the son of the owner, Joe?
Oh, that folks, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's just a draft here, Ben is
Working on it.
Yeah, it's in your folder, you, it's in your, you actually, you already had it here in the pile Cindy gave us.
Okay.
So, uh, he's just working on that right now with the seller's attorney.
Okay.
Okay, so at some point, what the board should do is just be prepared to sign off on that license agreement.
Alright, we're prepared, we're ready.
Okay, so it will, because it'll be all three of you, instead of, so you have to designate yourselves to sign it.
Alright.
And we're gonna be reimbursed, that was part of the agreement.
Yeah, Ben, Ben will take your, that's outside of, it's not in the document, but it's outside.
Okay.
I, first thing I told him.
Okay.
And I, no, I spoke to Ben the other day.
I just
Oh, yeah, no, no, I
You know, make sure it's, you know
And I even
Nobody gets
I even inflated a little bit
No free lunch.
Just to be sure they understood.
Right.
They wanted to move forward, they were looking at X, oh, yeah, no, no, we need to do it, okay. Next up is, the police chief would like to come in with two reservists, or two applications for reservists, for us to talk to them about, when's our next available?
Next week, the fourth.
Okay.
December fourth.
Perfect.
So if you want, Cindy could, could book each one of them for five minutes.
Please do that, Cindy. You guys wanna ask questions, or do you wanna just do a meet and greet, what do you want to do?
I, I think we're reserves, I think a meet and greet would, you know?
Let's all get one question, because you, I like the sweat off the forehead, you know, you just need to know right away that
One question each.
One question each.
Yeah, could I?
We'll clear them through Labor Council.
What would you bring to a potluck dinner?
You can't, you know, how about, what do you call it now? I wouldn't use potluck anymore.
Oh, nah, yeah.
Just saying, it's Massachusetts, they're cops.
Yeah, I'm gonna request these
Covered dish dinner.
What would you mean for covered dish dinner? What would you set the temperature at for your covered dish dinner?
Would you, how long does it take to, uh, put a twenty-five pound turkey in a microwave?
Right, yeah.
What's your favorite, Don?
Yeah.
I'm gonna request
Do you like glaze or unglaze?
My favorite.
Are you a dipper? How do you do the coffee and the donut?
Where's your
If you had a choice, Miss Murkies or Duncan, depending on your answer, would depend on how?
Look, you know Benny, put away his names.
Where's the fight?
Where's your sign?
My sign's right there.
Hidden by a state.
Yep. Okay, so, reach out and get that all organized for us, we'll get you the questions tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, update on the Franklin Land Trust. I guess we got a flyer over the weekend.
Yeah, everybody got a flyer, just to let you know.
So it's just They're taking, what, antiques and organ donations?
Many of us who are not in a
Mustangs, they, they're even looking for used Mustangs.
Many of us who are not in a position to make a generous cash or stock gift, nonetheless own property, collectibles, antiques, arts, coins, and other assets that have been in your hands for years, like a wife? They want the wife? I'm sorry, and what, and what we no longer have a use, oh, there you go, and what we no longer have a use for, right back to the wife, across New England. These are the kinds of gifts that have made the difference in hundreds of worthy causes, and that today might help bring us in the reach of our goal for this community cause. So, folks, get out your pennies, your silver certificates. Your wife, apparently, if you're done with her, these folks want them, they're gonna cash them in, and just maybe we'll get to that dollar amount. Well, hopefully it generated, I, I'm sure it generated a discussion or two at a kitchen table, um, maybe they'll get some funding out of it. Yeah, yeah, I'll move on.
Thank you.
I'll take those papers, Joe.
Sure. We should keep these and read them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the
Yes, you got today.
The reserve applicant
Trade you, I'll take the originals, okay? Here.
Oh, these are originals, yeah, I don't want these.
I'll take the
Yep. Alright, we, okay, so update on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary under Old Business, any updates, boss?
Everything's going great, we have our next meeting, the December seventeenth.
Okay, sounds good. And the roundtable meeting is crossed off on my agenda, but it is coming up, so
Was it the action part?
Nope, understood. Discussion of use of flaggers and infrastructure projects, we've, well, I guess we'll leave it, you know what, take that off, because we found out, you know, there's only one place that you can get flaggers from, or get trained, and then the other side of the state. Taser replacement program, lease purchase.
Yep, you have the updated documents from the police command staff
Mm-hmm.
Who met with the finance committee last night, and they are supportive of a three-year agreement, with the first year being paid four out of the forfeiture account, subsequent years would go through the budget process.
Yep.
And everything is subject to appropriation, but it is three years.
Yep.
Which is the most you can do at your level to approve, and then, and beyond, it's a town meeting.
Understood.
So, if the board, and, and they have certain pricing that they wanna take advantage of
Yep.
Very quickly, so the board, having
There were much more informative discussion last night, we really got into the, to the tics and tacs of it, and understood it much better.
Yeah.
So.
The units, how they operate Their lifespan.
Yeah, and even
And how they're deployed, and how they'd be used, and, and how the, the monitoring devices work and so forth, so
Right.
I believe they're looking for the board to endorse the three-year purchase approach.
Okay, so move.
I'll second it and commend the chief and lieutenant, the, the thought of telling the guys that voted no would be subject to tasing was very effective.
Yeah, well, I don't know if the finance committee understood that completely.
Well, they voted for it, so.
Yeah.
Aye.
At least the lieutenant was a good speaker last night, so it did work out well.
They both did very well.
Yeah, lieutenant did a good job, okay. Uh, under Old Business, the only thing I, I, I have that's, that's not here is, I'll need another packet, Carl, for the old library, and two other people reach out in regards to it, is it
Yeah, Cindy
Am I better off for just to, when's the open house, is an open house coming up still?
There is.
What are you doing, I think?
Thursday morning, the town attorney and myself and other professional staff will be hosting a open house.
On the twenty-ninth?
The twenty-ninth, at like nine a.m.
Okay.
It's all on, everything is through our webpage, it's online.
You know how that works, right, they just call you and, and you try to explain to them Understood, you know, you know how that works, right, they just call you and, and we try to explain to them everything, but.
What to go on the webpage, and you'll see.
Yeah, but after half hour, I'm like, I'll, you know what, I'll get that packet for you, it's just easier, so.
Have we had response?
And we've sent that over, well, we've physically produced six or seven of them.
Where people have actually picked them up.
And we've also referred people on, to the online's documents, so we, I can't tell you how many other people are interested in it, cause there are.
There's quite a bit, I, I, I was excited, and I'm telling them, you know what, bid fifty, bid a hundred, bid a thousand, but if you don't bid anything, you don't have a shot.
I had one person that's serious about it, that had a concern over some of the language that Ben had drafted, so I said.
The historical preservation restriction?
Right, so I said.
Well, that's your, your commission.
Right, so I said, go on Thursday.
Right.
Ben's gonna be there, and if you have a concern, uh, ask him about it.
Yeah.
And get clarification, but, uh.
And we're hoping to have a member of the commission.
Right, so, but I said.
Couldn't.
You know, just don't walk away.
Well, exactly, that's what I told every one of them, how do you not?
Right, you go there and ask the question, if you don't feel comfortable with it, then, then you don't feel comfortable.
I'll put a bid in for a thousand, lose, but at least. You gotta, right, so, it is all on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I can tell them that, give them this date to be there, and we're fine.
You want me to get you two packets for tomorrow?
Honestly, no, let, you know, we're shredding enough paper around here, let them, one of us is intelligent, so he'll be able to go online and figure that out, the other one, not so much, but that's fine. Alright, that's all I had for Old Business, um, New Business, or any Old Business for you? You.
I did speak with the attorney today on the post-agreement document draft for.
For Mary Jane?
For that, and, um, I did ask the attorney to go back to get some revenue projections from the applicant, because there's, the community impact fee has to be commensurate with the total cost to the community for, um, what those costs are to your community.
Right.
And it's generally done as a percentage of revenue, but until we understand what that potential revenue is, it's hard to put a number on the percentage, you need all three parts of the equation to get the equal side.
Right.
So, they're gonna go back and get that, cause you can't just impose, it has to be commensurate to the impact, so, the first one, um, and it's also, you have to look at the totality of it too, if there's more than one, there was, if you have one, the, the community impact is X, if you have two, it's not two X.
Right.
You know, X and a third, or whatever you wanna look at, so you have to try to figure that out, so I need to get that.
Is it diluted with more of them, or is it, is it a multiplier?
It's like fixed and variable costs, right, as soon as you have one, you have costs, when you have two, three, and four, the commit, the costs are not commensurate times, you know, times that number, it's some proportion thereof, so you have to just figure that out.
It's diluted, it's less.
Yeah, it's obviously less than one more, and then at some point, when you get, if you had a, you know, I don't think we would, but if you have a certain number, then if, you, if there was manpower involved, for example, you would need one, and then you have two, three, and four, you don't need another one, but you get to six, and you do, so.
Well, when you look at the news on the ones with the retail locations, the amount of police detail they have.
Totally different, correct.
I know.
We were fortunate not to have been exposed to all that.
Well, I, I think you, we're fortunate that we don't have it, and we're mega fortunate that we're not first, cause those lines will not be, it's just like the casino, right?
Well, absolutely.
Was mobbed for the first two months.
You open up two more stores locally?
And the lines are gone, and in, in six weeks, those lines will be gone, and they're paying the detail directly, it's not the town fronting the detail, they've hired, the town has forced them to hire that detail, so, but this is distribution, it's gonna be trucks in, trucks out, people in, people out, we just have to worry about the, the contents thereof and so on, and the, this, the Cannabis Control Commission's got a ton of rules and regulations for all that, so I don't know, we have to look at what is the impact to the community, and how that, what that impact fee would be, and then there's other, you know, there's other, other things, and then I, we have to come back as a board and discuss that, like, you know, if they want to put money forth for certain activities or so on, do we want that?
Right.
I don't know, you know?
Nonprofits.
Nonprofits, stuff like that, but do you really, you know, and then, you know, that just becomes this, you know, a question of, do you want this entity to be a sponsor of that, based on what they're doing, that's, and that's more of a policy decision, but the impact fee is numeric, and the Cannabis Control Commission is, they've been back and forth, there's been push to have them actually review some of these agreements, cause some of the agreements that were passed early on were a little onerous.
Right.
Is the best way to put it.
Yeah.
So it does have to be commensurate to the, to the impact of the community.
So who, who actually gives you the revenue projection?
That would be the applicant.
Okay.
So, and they, and I'm sure that's part of their file, and it, it's, it's straight math, again, it's part of their application to the, the CCC, and they also have so many square foot of growing space, and they can grow a crop in so much time, and they know what they're gonna get for said crop, so they can roughly estimate what their revenue is at full production.
Yeah.
To, to give you that number.
I was fortunate to go to a meeting last night, that they, going through the process upstairs with some of the boards, and, uh, there's apparently seven or eight or ten tiers of a growing operation, so the one in East Hampton is tier seven, right, so you might've saw the same thing I saw.
I was listening to the tape.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and these guys are tier one.
Yeah.
It's the smallest, middlest amount you're allowed to grow through the state.
Right.
As a, you know, I guess they're really a craft marijuana thing in the end, almost like a craft brewery as far as their, what they're gonna produce.
Which is the business platform he used for.
Yeah, yeah, right, cause it's a small batch type of stuff, so, it was interesting, cause I didn't know all that, and, yeah, so, I, I learned a lot last night about it in regards to all that, so, alright, let's keep us posted, any new business from you, sir?
No.
Boy, that was quick, you had that evil eye going or that twitch, I thought for sure you had something, nothing, alright, I got nothing either.
No.
It's just this dinner.
Oh, it's dinner.
Joe, we have to do this in open session.
Oh, I'm so sorry, that's why he's here, huh? It's at seven-ten, great, good, hey, uh, Troy Dupree, how are you tonight?
He just got here.
Oh, you just walked in, wonderful. Yeah, this is true, that's why I wanna do it all together.
Right.
Um, alright, so, basically, it's a discussion on job classification, and.
No.
Com- compassion, no, compensation, review services, review skirp of services. Have a good night, sir.
Good night, chief.
Oh, chief, I'm sorry.
So, this document, uh, shows what the state, and the pages behind it, show what the state is saying that municipalities should do in order to decrease their potential liability if there should be litigation based on a claim of pay inequity based on gender. So, the law's really based on differences involving gender, and the examination process is very lengthy and detailed, and you'll see that in the, the documents behind, the documents you have there.
The H E guidance.
Yeah, so we have to take every single person in every single position in the town, then we have to look at their job descriptions, duty and responsibilities, and then.
Guys, you might get a raise out of this.
Do some.
Although, I've just heard him say that, not so many words, but not elected officials, right?
No, not elected officials.
Of course, sorry, guys.
This is Massachusetts.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you can see that it's pretty comprehensive, it will probably take us about sixty hours to do it, we're doing it for another municipality right now, uh, at, you know, our regular rate, if you wanna do the calculation, is two-twenty-five an hour times sixty, which is, I don't know, twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, but we're already under retainer with you, and Carl, um, you know, I've done retainers like this with the town in the past.
Yeah.
We said, uh, we just do it for five thousand, we said it estimated five, but that's all I'm gonna charge you.
Okay.
So it'd be five thousand for it, we expect to complete it, uh, prior to your finalizing your budget, so that if adjustments have to be made, you can budget.
That'd be right in time, wonderful.
Do we have enough money in friends account?
Higher service account.
Higher service account to take here.
Funding's available, yeah.
Your firm has always been more than fair to the town of Southwick, I thank you for that.
Town has been fair to us.
They even moved closer for us.
Yeah.
Well, he used to live in Southwick, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know.
I used to have an office in my home.
Oh.
But he gave birth to the law firm in many different ways.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what I'll do is an actual retainer agreement, uh, format based on that.
Right.
And then, um.
The board, the chairman will sign it on the.
The chairman.
Oh, okay. That's right.
We'll get back to you soon, we're gonna hit the ground running on that, so it's gonna take us a while, I know you're doing your budget.
Yeah.
So, we'll try to get going on right away, it'll be Kim Roach and me, the two of us will work on it.
Wonderful.
So, that's all I have to open process.